Schedule meeting for March the 5th of the Southern Shores Town Council is in order. Invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence to honor all those people who are serving us so faithfully in their military forces and other posts around the world. Thank you. Counsel, I have one request on the agenda. The town managers informed me that item 4B is not needed.
4B or 8B?
8B. Item 8B. Not needed.
Mayor, there's two things included in 8B, just Budget Amendment Number 8 needs to come out. Budget Amendment Number 7 will stay.
Budget Amendment Number 8?
Right.
All right. With that change, I move approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Tab 1, Counsel, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of February 19th. What's your pleasure?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
At both same side. Staff report, Town Planner, Mr. Hesketh. Good evening.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a brief report for you for the month of February. Five zoning permits were issued, one lot disturbance permit was issued, thirty building permits were issued which consisted of one new single-family dwelling, one addition, two remodels, and twenty-six others. Fifty-eight building inspections were conducted at thirty-eight different job sites throughout town. There are currently eleven single-family dwellings under construction, as well as one bank, and the total amount of fees collected in February was eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-two cents. Any questions?
New construction is picking up.
It's been around, we've had between ten and thirteen new single-family dwellings under construction for the past few months. Obviously, and one bank's still under construction, it's been going on for a while, too.
Questions of the planner?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Cole, police?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of February 2013, these are some of the highlights regarding the call for services. As you can see, we had a total of eight hundred and fifty-four calls for service. Some of the breakdown, thirty of those were foot patrols, thirty-five were traffic control. We conducted two hundred and twenty-five residence checks, another two hundred and thirteen business checks. The investigators conducted seventeen follow-up investigations, responded to three domestics, three motor vehicle accidents, twenty alarm calls, fourteen suspicious persons, had two motorist assist, and eight mutual aid requests. We had a total of seventeen incidents or crimes that were reported. Couple of those breakdowns were one larceny, we had two criminal damage to property, and we had six that were drug-related. Made two criminal arrests, those were both drug-related. Officers conducted fifty-eight traffic stops. Out of the fifty-eight traffic stops, they issued thirty-six written citations and another twenty-two warning citations. And we, officers handed out two ordinance violations, and those were animal citations. Any questions on my report? Okay, the only other thing I would like to do is hand out the annual report. Police Department just completed today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I don't see Chief Harvey.
Chief Harvey won't be here tonight, Mr. Mayor, no report.
We have Mr. Bill Gleason with us tonight to give us a report from the planning board. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Bill Gleason, I'm representing the planning board. Sam is in Florida having a good time and asked me to represent us. We met on January 22nd, 2013, to consider an application for a zoning text amendment, ZTA 13-01, for an automated ice vending machine. And what this amendment would do would be to add language, if it's approved, that automated ice vending machines would be an accessory to shopping centers. And then later, of course, you'd need a conditional use permit, need to be approved by planning board and town council. In the proposed language, the, an automated ice vending machine means an enclosed, freestanding, unmanned structure that produces and vends bagged and bulk ice and may only be an accessory to, accessory use to a shopping center with signage not exceeding twenty percent of the exposed finished wall surface. Gordon Blanchard, one of the applicants, is here tonight sitting in the front row if you have any questions. I know there'll be a public hearing on this later. Just a couple of comments. The planning board, we really didn't like the term automated ice vending machine because the term vending kind of implies like a Coke machine or something, and this is much different than that. We talked about a ice dispensing machine, we talked about different terms, but ultimately the planning board approved a different term that I hope is in your minutes. We voted to change that name to an ice vending structure, which is more consistent with the town ordinance for structures. And then in parentheses following that, the word automated. And that was approved four to one by the board, they approved the ZTA, including that it was consistent with the town's land use plan. Just a side comment, personally, I think you might want to consider somehow including the word self-service in there. That's really what we're talking about here. Automated, yes, but it really is going to be a self-service operation that Mr. Blanchard could explain, but we're trying to get the terminology right so that it's not confusing when the ZTA language is hopefully approved. We also discussed signage, we discussed location, because the location's going to be a marketplace, at least that's the proposed location. No definite location has been set, but Mr. Blanchard said that they will hire a local surveyor to look at the site and see how it will fit within the, within that area. I think they're considering a, an island near the Wells Fargo Bank somewhere in that area. And parking was also discussed. According to West, only one parking place is needed, but still, that's going to be something that will have to be, there'll have to be an inventory to make sure that, that the marketplace parking can accommodate this, this structure. So, that's really our report. If there are any questions?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one question? When you mentioned the term self-service, is that a recommendation of the planning board?
No.
Okay.
No, no. They approved the term ice vending structure with the word automated following it.
Self-service is not a planning board recommendation?
No, it is not.
Mr. Mitchell? Southern Shores Civic Association.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. The SSCA, in an attempt to prevent additional erosion to the dunes that were affected by Hurricane Sandy and subsequent storms, the SSCA Board of Directors voted to award Coinjack Farms the contract to install sand fences at fifteen dune crossovers, that's approximately six hundred and fifty linear feet. Coinjack Farms is scheduled to start installing the sand fences in about two weeks, once they have received the necessary permits. The SSCA and AT&amp;T have come to an agreement for AT&amp;T to lease a portion of Triangle Park to install a stealth flagpole, cellie, or tower. Once both parties have signed the agreement, in approximately two weeks following, AT&amp;T will apply to the town for a conditional use permit. Now, I can't remember if I reported to you or not, but if I have, it's worth repeating. The SSCA will be putting a porta-john at Triangle Park in the summer, between the months of May and September. With the additional, the addition of the lifeguard, that has become a large used area during the summer, so an additional porta-john was needed. Any questions?
The sand fences, are they going to go up the path, so that we're just saying the sand fences?
No, on the sides, some of those dune areas are fifty feet, some are thirty, and some are only fifteen, but they'll go on the side in the front where they come off, there will be no fence right in the front of the steps. Thank you.
Any question? Thank you. CPOA? Chickahawck Property Owners Association, we have Mr. Leo Holland.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Our annual membership meeting will be March 23rd here in the Pitt Center at 10 o'clock. We have sent out the ballots for voting, also the passes. The payment of dues is through a program we've got with BB&amp;T, so the members aren't to send us any checks, you send everything to BB&amp;T, and you can also do it online. The ballot this year has about four items. Do you have a question, sir?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm just listening carefully.
Okay. So, your instructions, because I know you're a member. On the ballot this year, we've got four items. One is the ballot for voting for the Board of Directors, the approval of our budget, and also the approval of our bylaws, and there's a fourth one there. It's like sort of a catch-all, if we have something else happen at the meeting, the secretary can vote on your behalf. Now, we're asking the members to vote. There's five people available, or nominees for the board, you vote for three. And five people are Kathy Krager, Carlos Seema Cardo, Christopher Nissan, Candy Roberts, and Tom Wilson. So, those are our members, and three will be elected for three-year terms. Any questions? If not, and we invite any members of the council to attend the annual meeting here on the 23rd at 10 o'clock.
I seldom miss one, but I'm going to miss this one. I'm going to be out of town. Any sign up for public comment? Public comment? Amanda Lottis.
Hello, my name's Amanda Lottis, and I live in Southern Shores, and I'm just here because I found out today about the plans for the cellphone tower, and I was very upset to learn about that, especially because when I lived in Charlottesville, Virginia, a few years ago, we successfully, we were able to stop Verizon from building a cellphone tower. The wireless frequencies, the radio frequencies that are chronic exposure when you're living near a cellphone tower, they have proven health effects. So, I just wanted to bring some informational pages over there that discusses them, and especially about the BioInitiative Report, which was a group of a hundred scientists from around the world, and came together to discover, do thousands of studies, and found that unequivocally there are health effects, negative health effects. They found genotoxicity in single and double strand DNA damage, reduction in free radical scavengers, particularly with melatonin, neurotoxicity in humans and animals. So, it's a serious issue, and especially having it be hidden in a flagpole, it's, I would like to know if I'm living around a cellphone tower. One of the reasons I moved to Southern Shores, because there are relatively fewer cellphone towers here. And I think it's very disheartening that next to Kitty Hawk Elementary School, my son is nine years old and attends, it's a wonderful school, but to see all those antennas there so close when the health effects are real is very upsetting. So, it just, I don't want to be all doom and gloom and Debbie Downer, but I just wanted to leave some information here, so I thank you very much for hearing me, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. They have before us a zoning text amendment, 13-01, automated ice vending machine zoning text amendment application. And we'll turn to our town planner to present this.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, you have the ZTA application 1301 in front of you, and the applicants are Tom and Gordon Blanchard. Mr. Blanchard is seated in the front row, and the requested action is to amend the town's zoning ordinance regarding Section 36-57, definition of specific terms and words, Section 36-165, regulations governing signs, and Section 36-207, C General Commercial District. The applicants are proposing to amend Section 36-57, 36-165, and 36-207 by adding language to allow for automated ice vending structure, parentheses automated, that's the way it would, that they have, that the planning board and the applicant have proposed it to be worded in the ordinance. The proposed language, if approved, would allow ice vending structures as an accessory use for shopping centers in the C General Commercial Zoning District, pending approval of a conditional use permit by the town council, which also requires a planning board review and recommendation. In their proposed language, an ice vending structure automated means an enclosed, freestanding, unmanned structure that produces and vends bagged and bulk ice that may only be an accessory to a shopping center with signage not exceeding twenty percent of the exposed finished wall surface. Town staff recommendation is that town staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment, and that the application is consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan. The town planning board, as Mr. Gleason pointed out, did recommend approval four to one of this application at their January 22nd meeting, and that is also consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan. Also, I believe Carrie has a few photos that she could show you that are also included in your package that may be more helpful for the public to see. This is picture one of three that is structured, and Mr. Blanchard will probably comment further on later on, but I believe these are operated by them as well. So, there you have essentially what they'll be, what they're proposing to add to the town zoning ordinance. That concludes my report. If you all have any questions, I'll try to answer them at this time.
Any questions of the planner at this stage? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and we turn to our town attorney to conduct a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have a public hearing now on the proposed zoning text amendment ordinance The public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak at the public hearing, please move to the podium and state your name and address, and would you like to place a time limit on it, Mr. Mayor, of three to five minutes?
With this crowd, I don't think we need to bother.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I know them all.
Intend to speak, if you'd just approach the podium and give us your name and address, that would be. Last call. Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it back to you for council discussion and action.
Thank you, Town Attorney. We have it before us, counsel, to get discussion going. I move approval of the zoning text amendment to ordinance 2013-03-01. As presented to us in our, our book.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second. Now, there's going to be some discussion, I suspect.
You know us too well.
Who wants to kick off?
You know, I can kick off. First, I'd like to say that I'm, I appreciate an ice machine, and I appreciate this one coming in, and I have no issues with ice machines. Some of my best friends are ice machines. There's a couple of things that I needed to discuss. The first thing is a definition whereby this, this operation also dispenses water. And so, this device is also a water dispensing device besides an ice dispensing device. So, since it does both, do we have to elaborate more on this definition, or not? I don't know the answer to that while we're defining what this ice machine is, because I think all ice machines that are made by Ice House have water dispensation in them, so that might be an integral part of their sales, of selling water also. That's, that's the first thing I have, so it's to discuss that. The second thing, I have a problem with the regulations, because I don't understand them, when it comes to signage. Section 36-165 says, under signs permitted in commercial districts, it says, "The total signage for each lot tracked the parcel and business use limit to one square foot of sign area for each two linear feet of frontage facing on a public street right of way." This is a freestanding, this is a freestanding building, so it has four sides, and if placed correctly, can face two particular streets. So, how much square footage is it allowed? And I know it says a max of sixty-four square feet, so therefore, this then building could have a maximum size of eight by eight, sixty-four, or sixteen by, well, one, or, I mean, by whatever, it's four, or thirty-two by two. You have some large amounts of area that you can throw signage up onto, if that is indeed the definition. But then you get to the Section A, and then it talks about wall signs placed against exterior walls, a building shall not extend more than six inches beyond the building, and shall exceed twenty percent of the exposed finished wall surface, including openings. This house has possibly four walls. What happens with that discussion of twenty percent? Is it twenty percent for each wall, does it get eighty percent on one wall? I mean, I don't know what we have here. And this is not a problem necessarily, but the picture that we have shows a very nice wall with a very nice little sign. I was down in Buxton, and down there, that ice machine has slightly more signage on it than the one that we see. So, and then we have number four on that discussion, where wall signs placed, it's about ice vending structures, wall signs placed against the exterior will not extend six inches beyond the structure, shall exceed twenty percent of the exposed finished wall surface, including openings, but no discussion of what wall are we talking about? How many walls are we talking about? All four, one wall? What is a discussion of walls? So, I think we need, I think, and I don't know exactly, but I think that we need to figure out maybe some answers to those questions as to how much signage we can put on it, because it is actually, the signs can be made, and they can be adhered very easily to the structure, so you can do anything you want with signage. And so, I just don't want it to turn into an ugly affair with tons of signage all over, because it's freestanding, then we're, we're going to have an issue with signage, or I am mistreating it totally. And that's the problem that I think we need to discuss, but two problems, or maybe it's not a problem at all.
Could Wes answer those questions? Could Wes answer those questions?
Can you address them?
Of course, I know what I read in it, but you better get it from there.
The proposed language, specifically 36-165-9D4, which they are proposing to add to the existing sign language, is, as you pointed out, copied from a previous subsection of 36-165. And in this case, it could be, the language could be amended to make it more specific, if that's what you all wish to do. Right now, I guess it could be interpreted that you could go eighty percent, in this case, if you had twenty percent, you could put it all on one side, or twenty percent on each side. If you wanted to amend it somehow, it could be in the form of a motion tonight, where you could place or restrict it to only one wall, or a certain percentage for each wall, as opposed to as a total. That's my response. There, as far as the, if water should be added to the definition, I'm not sure if that's necessary, but I mean, I don't know, I don't think it would cause any harm.
Could we go back to what you just said about the signs? Would that be something, since this is conditional use, that could be made a condition depending upon the location, and when we actually see the permit, or would it be better to have that pre?
My thought is, and I may have the town attorney chime in here, is that the signage, if it were adopted with this language as it is now, I don't think you would be able to impose a condition in the conditional use permit that would be any more strict than what is here. But I would, I defer to bend on that.
On a conditional use permit, if you have certain requirements met, the applicant obtains the permit, but yet you are able to place reasonable conditions related to zoning upon that development. This would actually show more relation to zoning. I believe you could have some specific reasonable restrictions upon signing based on, signage based on an individual, however many of these ice vending machines we may have all around the town at different times, but the, depending on each situation and each site, that's the purpose of the conditional use permit, is so that you can consider, decide individually the situation, and provide reasonable conditions at that time.
Well, I also believe that it's, there may be other structures in the future that we don't know about, that will be like the old Kodak, or the film processing, or pharmacy things that sat in the middle of parking lots, and that if, if we don't get this straightened out, then we will have them to deal with now as to, well, the ice machine gets, you know, this percentage, and how come we can't get this percentage, unless not? And again, I just think that maybe we should get this squared away as to how, you know, we've discussed that, because it's actually the only freestanding commercial unit that we, well, unit that we have sitting in a commercial area, or will be sitting possibly in a commercial area that's freestanding by itself. Everybody else in there is part of a building, and has a storefront, and subscribes to the rules of signage.
I'm confusing a little bit, too, when you're talking about freestanding, because when I read this, the one you were quoting, that to me said freestanding sign. That would be like the marketplace, to me, would be like the marketplace sign. I didn't see that applying to the ice machine. Am I wrong? I mean, the structure's freestanding.
The structure is freestanding, but there would be wall signage on it. I think what Councilman Kowalski may be saying is that it would be turning basically into a freestanding sign, although it's a structure with wall signage.
Because it's a structure, it's not a freestanding sign.
Yes, I thought the same thing as you, but when you'll read- Yes, I thought the same thing as you, but when you'll read this, you find it starts jumping around. The ruling starts jumping around because it does talk about initially, the rule does talk about the discussions of signage for a retail shopping center, which I assume infers the shopping center's own signage that it's allowed to have to attract you to the shopping center. But then all of a sudden, we throw in, and under that, we throw in with different types of wall signs, canopy signs, and then we talk about ice vending structures are thrown into the group. And then all of a sudden, we start talking about 20% of exposed finished wall, which is four walls, and that's 20% of each wall, all four walls.
Well, when this all came under retail shopping center, that's why I thought the freestanding sign is for the shopping center.
That's correct.
Then the wall signs is on the shopping center.
That's correct.
And the canopy sign is on the shopping center and separate from that is now an ice vending structure which is adjacent to or supporting the shopping center. And it has its own set of signs, rule, sign rules, I should say.
Well, unfortunately, it says, I mean, I thought the same thing, but it forces wall signs, number two, one square foot of business sign area for each linear foot of storefrontage shall be allowed. Stores which are on corner stores or end stores shall be entitled to the amount of linear footage based on the total frontage of the storefront. So now all of a sudden, we've switched from store, from shopping center to store discussions.
Yeah, but it's like Marketplace has five, six, seven, whatever stores. This applies to each store that's in Marketplace.
I understand, but what I'm saying is that there's a, there, this subdivision is, this is discussing, D discusses the, the marketplace as an entity with its own sign and then it shifts to number two, discussing store signs, individual store signs in that marketplace. Not that the section could be worked a little bit and made middlebore logical.
Yeah. I don't have the same problem that you have, but who knows what the future would bring, so.
I just don't know, for example, even if you take that and talk about stores, they're entitled to linear footage, they're entitled to, you know, a linear foot of storefrontage for one square foot of sign on their wall signs. Well, what about this building? Where is its linear frontage? What is it? If it's got four sides, where is its frontage?
This building would be restricted just, the only thing that it would be allowed to do is what four says it.
Just number four.
The intent is number four.
Okay, so nothing else but number four.
Right. So it would be limited to 20% of the wall space.
Finished wall space, including on that, what finished wall spaces, that all four walls?
Currently, that's the way the planner intends to read it. But like he said, it could be modified to be each wall or one wall or different walls. But the other provisions for canopy signs, wall signs, freestanding signs presumably would not, the intent was not for them to apply to
Okay.
The ice vending machine.
That's great.
The ice vending machine is its own world of signage.
Yeah, that's good. So now the next question we have on this, is that okay? Now, 20% of what exposed wall? The long wall, the short wall on these, on these, you know, rectangular structures?
I think, I think.
I mean, that's not said.
The planner's intent at this point is that it would be of the entire wall space. So you could take, you would calculate the entire wall space.
Four walls.
Come up with 20% and that would be your maximum signage on the walls, depending, you could put all of that on one side, you could put four signs, you know, signs on all four sides, you could put three signs on each side.
So could you put 80%? Could you put 80% on one side?
You could put 20% of the entire wall frontage on one wall.
Okay, all right. So then actually with having four walls, then now have a whole lot of area for signage.
Well, if you think about it, the, the structure could be approached from 360 degrees. So I don't think you want to sit in there blank with no explanation as to what it is from any approach. So I'm assuming that they would want to put some form of signage on all four sides.
Correct, okay.
But it can't exceed the 20% of the entire wall surface.
The photo you showed us for the one in Buxton was one against, it was against the wall.
One sided passage. We have the photos here if you want to look at them.
But we've, we've had this provision of, of 20% in the ordinance for a long time. And all we have done here is picked it up for ice vending structures.
So with this picture?
Suppose we limited, suppose it could be limited to 20% on each wall or any wall Would that make you happy?
It's not a matter of making me happy. I'm just looking at some equality amongst individual businesses. I just don't.
Would that, would, would that help us, George?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, it might be a problem if he wants to put that up on that wall, but I mean, it would help, it would help us. It may not help him, but it would help us. But I think that exceeds 20%. That's a pretty long wall.
I don't know how you, how you measure coverage on a sign like that.
That's another interesting issue. How do you measure coverage?
20% of the, only 20% of the wall can be covered by paint used for sign purposes? Is that what we're talking about?
I guess this is why I raised the conditional use basis because this one's against a wall. Would we want to explain at that point, if we had this kind of a structure, what we want for signage on a conditional use for that particular building?
There's another question, which I hate to raise, but if you, can you throw the front on here? Any, any front picture just to show that now there you have openings, shoots, money, money, and then you have an open sign and you've got the identification and that would far exceed 20% of available wall space? Or do you count all the stuff in the wall in part of the whole discussion? Or do you want to just count what's left is 20% of the wall? Like that, I don't know. Or is it? Here comes the book.
Are instructions on how use considered part of the signage?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
As, as the enforcer, how would you measure if someone came to you with a permit? How would you take a look at it and declare this is 20%? The way it's written right now?
You would take the square footage of the, you would get a calculation and usually sign companies are pretty good at providing that information for you, measurements, but there are measurement requirements in the existing signage ordinance that points out how you're supposed to basically create a shape and get the square footage out of it. It is based on that definition, if you'd like. I don't have it in front of me, but I could certainly read it, read it to you from the book.
But the, this structure itself, you would just measure the walls?
When we're given the plans, we would be required to be, we would have the square footages and the calculations in front of us. That's something that we have the authority to require in the permitting process.
And calculate 20%.
The exact, exact percentages and calculations. You would have that in front of you in a conditional use permit application.
And the process, if we, if we approve the CTA as it's written, there still is a site plan.
Yes, sir.
A review.
Yes, sir.
And the potential for conditional uses added.
Condition, it is a conditional use permit and it does go back to the planning board as well as the town council for a public hearing. And you can attach, as the town attorney pointed out, reasonable conditions that you think are necessary to be attached to the permit.
And is the signage determined at the time of site plan?
Uh, yes, sir.
So at that point, you should know what the percentages are.
We should have that. We, in this, in this specific case, if it were to be approved, I would make sure that we had that, you had that in front of you at the time of the request of approval.
But it's theoretically possible to put this in the middle of a marketplace and have signage going all the way around this, this building at 20% currently on each of the walls of this building.
As it's written right now, it's not each of the wall, like I said, like it was discussed earlier, it's not specific as to which walls. It just says 20%. So I would recommend if you are concerned about that, we could insert, you could insert each wall into the signage requirement.
It'd be at least fair to the other people that are in that shopping plaza, right? That have 20% of theirs. Well, I don't know. I mean, I think it's, can we amend the motion? So I'd like to amend the motion and, and change the, what do we have here? We have a section 36-165 regulations governing signs go down to 9D4 and change it to not exceed 20% of each finished wall surface, including openings.
I think if I could.
Tweak it?
Tweak your motion to amend, I think it would be better to provide that 20% of the exposed finished wall surface on which the sign is located, including openings. Because if, the way you said it, you're still talking about 20% for each, you could still add that in the aggregate. I think what you want to do is you want it to be 20% for the wall that the sign is located upon. I think that's what you're trying to do.
Okay.
And I think it's better to spell it out that way if at all possible.
That makes sense. Whatever you said.
Well, I have one, just one comment to that and I hate to drag it on, but what if there were more than one sign being proposed as, you know, like if they were decals? In that case, with that language, if it says on which the sign is located, they could have more than one to equal that 20%.
On which the signage.
Yeah, thank you.
Is located.
Well, to me, that offered amendment overcomes the objection.
Yep.
It cuts it into conformity with all other structures.
And that kind of takes care of all structures that are freestanding structures.
Did you get a second on your?
No, I have not. I'm just.
I need a second.
On the amendment? I have a second to the amendment.
Okay. Do we want to discuss this further on the amendment?
I have other questions.
Oh, we do want to discuss.
Yes, we do. First of all, I was really glad to see that this was set up as a conditional use because I started to think we've got three shopping centers. I could see three ice machines, but the way we've set it up, I'm comfortable with that. But I do have some questions and are probably more for you than for anyone else.
Jody, are you talking, are you addressing the amendment that's on the floor?
Are we doing just the amendment?
We're just doing the amendment.
Then I'm, no, I'm not talking about that.
Okay.
You confused me with that the last time.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead.
I, I think everybody has agreed and I'll call for a vote on.
On the amendment.
The amendment by Councilman Kowalski.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Now we have an amendment motion on the floor and it's open for discussion.
That I'm not ready to vote on, right? Thank you, okay. First of all, my question was, why Southern Shores? Why not Duck? Why not Kitty Hawk? I mean, I'm thinking of 12 going up and down. We're a very small, basically residential town with a minimum commercial area. Why would Southern Shores be the place to do something like this for you folks?
Good point.
Yes.
That's a business decision.
Mm-hmm. I'm just curious before we approve.
Um, one of the reasons we really like Southern Shores was because of the marketplace. You get a lot of traffic in and a lot of traffic out and so it really works to our advantage to have that visual aid of people coming in, people coming out of food line, you know, Starbucks. There's just, you know, all the banks being there, there is a ton of traffic. We're currently working with the town in Axhead too. We've passed through the town of Kettle Hill Hills and are in negotiations with somebody there. We haven't really done anything at Kitty Hawk. The one in Buxton is one that we operate. As far as Duck, we own Kettle Hill Supply Company as well and we're over our property coverage and so I can't fit one on there. Otherwise, I certainly would be. And Duck's such a small town and has so many different parking issues because of when the regulations on parking were passed, there's really not enough room without purchasing a completely separate piece of property or I tear down this Centura Bank and put it there and the bank makes more money.
I was just curious. I know this is a business decision, it's your marketing team and all of that, but just knowing all of the tourists they have up there and all the interaction, I was just curious as to why you decided that Southern Shores was the place to do it.
Yeah, mainly through this, and we're looking in Corolla too. We've been working with John Wright there about putting it in his property and looking at Currytuck as well.
Okay.
So, but the, the rules that regulate them, they can't be within two miles of one another under their guidelines.
Okay.
So, and our purpose in a lot of this was really, you know, and why we did a conditional use is we really want to hear the opinion of the town and try and make this as easy as possible and fit in whatever y'all, y'all want to make it work.
Good, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one other question, which is probably more, not to you, I'm sorry, most associated with, to Wes. This is a standalone building that will be built for this purpose. Don't take this the wrong way, but suppose something happens and it doesn't work out and there, now we've ended up with a building that was set up for an ice machine and what do we do with it? I mean, do we demolish it? Do we?
I would recommend as being that a conditional use permit would be required, that it probably would be or could be considered a reasonable condition to attach to that permit that if the structure or business or use does not work out or has not been used within X amount of time or X months, then the structure shall be removed or demolished and removed, taken down and all equipment hooked up to it, similar to a wireless tower. They have requirements, like if they've been abandoned or something of that nature, they have to be deconstructed and removed. And I would recommend that that could be a condition in the conditional use permit unless the town attorney had a problem with that.
Okay. You have a problem with that?
Not particularly on short notice, but.
Well, it is an answer at some point when we take.
I mean, as I've said, you can put reasonable conditions and that may be a reasonable condition. The bigger question is, did the ordinance has not already deal with that? And would someone be in violation for having a non customary, would the marketplace then be in violation for having a non customary accessory use that is not being used as a valid use on their property? And would you go through enforcement procedures to get them to remove it? That would be what my initial thought would be of how it would work out, but you may also be able to put something in the conditional use permit as well.
And the wording of that would maybe make a difference. Maybe the structure could be used for something else. You don't have to demolish it. It could be used for something else, but at the time you review that, the conditional use could be explored.
Well, right now, under your ordinance, the only thing that's going to be a, this use is going to be the only accessory use to a shopping center unless, I would suspect you probably have something in there that allows you to have customary use, customary accessory uses, which would be in your houses, that would be sheds and things like that. I'm not sure if there is a customary accessory use to a shopping center, but this would be the only accessory use that you would definitely have permitted that I know of in a shopping center. So if there's no other use for it, then it would not be an allowed use of the land.
Okay.
Mary. What's the size of this structure, Mr. Blanchard?
Eight by 25.
It's delivered on a flatbed truck?
It is. And it's kind of crated and placed on center block so if it needed to do, I could bring one of my trucks, pick it up and put it up.
Oh, good.
Take a catalog and maybe I would give eyes away to the contractor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have to satisfy the building inspector with respect to hurricane forces?
You need to supply it with electricity and water, I presume. Do you need sewage for it? No? It contains all its water, anything melted, it just keeps it there or ekes out or?
It's basically a giant freezer that makes ice and dumps it into the freezer. So there's not a lot of meltage. There is a small one inch PVC pipe that does drain out the back, basically the condensation that the ambient heat will heat up around the refrigeration unit and just like an air conditioner unit, but it's not any significant amount of water. Pretty much the water that gets in the freezer continues to stay frozen. The most water by far what we see is if somebody, you know, doesn't get all the ice out of the chute or drops a bag and, you know, there's ice there, which is typically why, you know, there's something there to let the water get down. So it doesn't, a deck of some sort almost walking up to it. So there's no slippery surface or creating problems there. But there's not really a whole lot of drainage. The one in Buxton that I have has had little to no problems with drainage at all.
I noticed that the one in Buxton has lost its canopy to hide its units upon its roof. The picture you submitted to us has its canopy still on it. What would happen if a canopy blew off or fell off on the one in the marketplace if it's, that's where it goes?
The one in Buxton, I did not put a canopy on. But those things are, the metal roofing on that and the metal structure that holds it up is rated for well over 200 miles an hour. So it's, I haven't seen one or heard of one that's blown off yet. It's basically same technology.
But this one will have one?
Absolutely. I mean, if, that's our intention for sure. And to get it to match kind of what, you know, again, that's why we want to be here working with y'all and setting up this conditional use.
Basically like the pictures that you have.
That's my hope.
That you submitted, including the yellow bumpers in the front and stuff like that.
That, yeah, absolutely. The yellow bumpers are pretty much required by us because you don't want, you know, a truck runs into it, it's a huge investment down the road.
it's a fifty-dollar bumper.
Is there any health department requirement for, if you're dispensing water?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have to have it inspected for, for safety, for, for dispensing water, for pathogens, or anything like that, for bacteria or from the health department?
No, with the purification systems that they have in there, it's basically the town's water, so we're just, you know, hooking up the water meter to it, so it's, you know, the town's water's clean, so worst-case scenario, my water's as bad as the town's, and it adds a purification system to it, which is, you know, not capable of turning the water bad, and since it doesn't have a bathroom and it is a unmanned facility and there's no way for consumers to get in, it's an enclosed environment, so there's really no way for anybody to get in and contaminate anything.
Okay. Thank you.
And people bring their own water containers to get filled, is that what happens?
Yeah, you can bring in a five-gallon LeBlu jug, or you can bring in a water cooler, it's got a little door you open, stick it in, and it will fill you five gallons up in a matter of, you know, thirty seconds or so.
Does it have bottle dispensation, too?
It does not, it'll only dispense a one gallon or five gallon at a time.
So you have to bring your own bottle?
And the water sales, I know that was a concern that you said earlier, might account for three percent of my total sales, which one of the reasons why it's never been relevant is because it's never gotten a high enough percentage to actually be any significant part of the business.
Will it take credit cards as well as cash, or take both?
No credit cards, cash. Yeah.
Further discussion, come in?
No.
Are you ready for the question? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We have an approved zoning text amendment. We turn to our town manager for item eight-eight, Honeysuckle Street rebuild project contract.
Mr. Mayor, I believe y'all, the council members have had opportunity to review the plans and specifications for this project. The bids did come back in and staff reviewed them. We had two bids, it was done as an informal, under informal bidding. The lowest bid was submitted by RPC Contractin at a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars. We did determine that RPC Contractin was the lowest, most qualified bidder. As you recall, they are, that same firm is in the process of finishing up project at Deer Path and Gravy Pond, they, they are down to their punch list items, and we have met with them and they are proceeding for completion, we're confident in that and we're confident in all the resolution of that project. So at this point, I would recommend to the council and RPC Contractin be awarded this bid, this contract for Honeysuckle Lane Road Project in the amount of a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars. And by the way, that amount is already included in the appropriated street, street budget for this year.
I move we approve the RPC bid. We have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We do have budget amendment number seven to consider, council. Number eight is the one I was trying to refer to when I amended the agenda. Budget seven is before you and the amount of twenty-eight thousand, fifteen dollars.
And, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, we just recall this is for two items, one is for Fern Drive entrance repair and rebuild, so that we can get that done this spring, and the other is two thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars for the two items on East Dogwood that you discussed last meeting. And that's what we put on for this, for this budget amendment.
Any question? I'll move approval of budget amendment number seven.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Proposed town policy and position paper. This was a draft resolution that grew out of our discussion at the council retreat last month. Is before us for review, refinement, further action as council deems appropriate necessary. I don't think we need any motion to be able to get on to the discussion of this thing because we're presenting it as a draft and it will be available for us to, after discussion tonight, to offer any revisions that you might think would be an improvement. What say you, council?
I like the format being presented as a resolution because I know we had a lot of discussion, and by putting in this format, we have all of the kind of topics that we discussed at the retreat under the listing of the whereas's, and then the, then the actual then vision statement, and the policy and how we would react and enact it as part of the closing of the resolution, so I like that approach because I was concerned about how we would document something like this and where we would keep it, where we would look at it to make it available, so I like that, I like that format.
I have no issues with it, I think the, the, the policy statement says it all, I think, in the second page, line nine, that the town of Southern Shores is committed to ensuring that its residents and the general public, including citizens with disabilities, have reasonable access to natural areas, recreation areas, public trust areas, and open spaces, which are now or in the future owned, controlled, administered, maintained by a town of Sou, by the town of Southern Shores, and I think that's the, that's the gist of this, and, and the, the resolution is actually involving in fulfilling that wish on the second page, so.
Right. Yeah, that is the meat of the, of the paper.
I've gone over it several times, and as a draft, it appears to me to be exactly what we discussed, exactly the way we wanted it stated.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
I seem to find council nodding their head at this draft resolution.
Mr. Mayor, town attorney and I have just picked up on something on line fourteen under the policy statement. Second clause, the town is committed to seek and act on any, and the recommendation is to put the word reasonable there in front of opportunity.
What line is that?
Line fourteen on page two.
Oh, oh, here, got it.
Second clause, insert the word reasonable in front of opportunity is the recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
I'll buy that.
We can do that. I would suggest on line five, page two, that is always needed, the word always needed in there, the town of Southern Shores shall always reserve the right. That's a nitpick.
It doesn't really change the meaning, but you're right, it is kind of a-
So you want, you want it to place to say reserves the right?
Shall reserve the right.
Shall reserve the right.
Take out the word always.
We just whipped, okay.
Any other changes? Anybody have any suggestions for other changes? Are you ready to approve this? I, I move the adoption of resolution two-zero-one-three-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-one.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. We have a resolution. We want to give this- I will not finish that remark. I started talking before I was thinking. That didn't work. We turn to our town manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tomorrow afternoon at five-thirty, we have scheduled a citizens' street meeting on Honeysuckle. We'll have our famous tent and table and plans and specs program that we'll put on at five-thirty for citizens, and they've all been invited to review this with the town, with the project engineer and myself, so I just wanted to assure you of that. Also, the second item, I've been able to successfully negotiate with Department of Transportation so that they will put the decking on Trinity Bridge, of Trinity Bridge, on their paving schedule, so their contractor will be paving that. Cannot give an exact date, hopefully very soon, the contractor for that particular pot of money of DOT just happens to be RPC, so RPC will be paving the decking upon direction of DOT.
On that, they will extend the paving to include the walkway, will they not?
The, the plan is to replace exactly what was taken up, walkway, curbs, and, and paving debt, and I won't know any specifics of how and when until RPC contacts me. Third item of my report is streets that are listed for improvement for next fiscal year have been estimated as to cost by the project engineer, and they will be on your March nineteenth meeting agenda for discussion with the individual prices, so that will be basically a component of the budget for the year that we'll be discussing on March nineteenth. The fourth item, the local government commission is requiring a public hearing on the, on a proposed installment contract, which is basically is the, the debt for the canal project in the amount of three million dollars, and that's gonna have to be set, Mr. Mayor, for March nineteenth, is my recommendation that, that you declare that set for, for March nineteenth, it's being advertised for March nineteenth. And in your packet, you will have the actual proposed term sheet from PNC who had the, who was selected for the, to provide the financial package for this project, you will have that as well as other local government commission documents to consider. Another item that will be required on the March nineteenth agenda will be a resolution instructing PNC and staff and the local government commission that Southern Shores does intend to proceed with the three-million-dollar, five-mile canal dredging project, so that will be on your March nineteenth agenda as well. The canal bids, the bids for the canal project are due on March twenty-eighth, that basically gives staff the Easter weekend to review them and make a recommendation to you on the evening of April second as to a lowest, most qualified bidder. This morning, a pre-bid conference was held here in the Pitt Center, and five potential bidders showed up for that. It's not a requirement, but five did show up and it is a factor in determining qualification. If all goes well and you do all these adoptions, either, both on March nineteenth and on April second, April third, I'll be traveling to Raleigh with all the package to meet with the local government commission at that time to go over that and go ahead and clock it in for the agenda for May seventh, so that's our timetable for the canal project. So March nineteenth and April the second will be two dates, two meeting dates that council will consider approval of various finance and construction documents for the canal project. And hopefully, if all that is done, May seventh will be the approval date by the local government commission, and we should have the loan closed within the next week after that. The survey for the town hall and also for the Public Works Building has been completed, as you recall, these two properties will be used as security for the loan. And that's my report, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Hearing done, thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I will, here and now, set public hearing required by the local government commission with respect to financing the canals for our meeting of March the eighteenth.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Nineteenth. Our council meeting is the nineteenth, isn't it?
Yes.
And council, I will be in Florida, so. Pro ten.
After he tells you all that, he's leaving.
I'll be conducting that. That's all I have. You have anything, Jody?
No.
Nothing.
How old, David?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Oh, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We adjourn.